Good evening. I'd like to call the December, or excuse me, the January 26th, 2015 Longmont City Council meeting order, this is a regular session, could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers, only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So now we have the January 12th regular session meeting minutes to approve, Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I move approval of the January 12th minutes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent. Valerie, any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, there are no revisions.
Okay. Is there a report from the city manager?
Mayor, I do have a couple of comments, this was brought to my attention that there was a provision in the airport, the ordinance that establishes Airport Advisory Board to review and make recommendations regarding leases, the lease in question regarding Mile High did not go to the Airport Advisory Board, so we could, we can pull that off the agenda and take it to the Airport Advisory Board for review, or we could move forward, that's up to councils.
Okay. No, no, just that, I guess I'd be fine with letting it go in front of the Airport Advisory Board if that's the way we normally operate with, do all leases go in front of the Airport Advisory Board?
Well, there's, I guess in the transition between airport directors, we were not taking those leases before, and so we don't know exactly when that stopped, but that's something we'll have to look at.
Okay.
We were trying to figure it out really quickly, but we couldn't figure it out.
I mean, I'd kind of like to deal with it tonight, but what do you guys think, you want to just let the Airport Advisory Board weigh in on the lease and then bring it back? Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, getting done with my snicker bar, I guess I would like to make sure that everyone here to speak on it is heard, so they don't go home, and, you know, so we should make sure that we have that, and then by waiting, technically, I'm sure they will come again, and I anticipate and look forward to that, but if that's what, I mean, it's no harm, no foul by having the Airport Advisory Board look at it.
And then the other factor is that Councilmember Santos is not here to vote, and it's kind of an important thing, so. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, it was actually Chairman Dulce that brought this to my attention, so I think it's, it was his suggestion that we go ahead and try to get this back in front of them, so.
Okay, and Councilmember Peck.
I think it should go in front of the Airport Advisory Board also, because the more eyes looking at this lease, the better.
All right, and Councilmember Christensen.
Yeah, I agree with everyone, Jeff is on the board, so I think it's better to have more eyes on it, and also, you know, that's what the airport, they're there to advise us, but they also have a unique take on it too, so I think it's good to have it before them as well.
And Councilmember Finley.
Do you need a motion?
No, no, we can, we'll pull that and take it to the Airport Advisory Board, I just wanted to bring that to council's attention.
Okay, I'm all in favor of that.
Okay, looks like you got your marching orders. Okay. So now we have a special report.
Mayor Coombs, the Longmont, I think it's the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, President Jessica Erickson will actually make this presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor Coombs and council, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to provide the first ever report of the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, as hopefully you are all aware, last Wednesday we did announce the renaming and rebranding of our organization from the economic, Longmont Area Economic Council to the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, which we think better reflects our position as a collaborative organization within the community. As part of our rebranding, we also took a look at our strategy and where we're focusing our resources and our time in terms of economic development efforts on behalf of the community, and have a renewed focus in four different areas, the first being Advanced Longmont, which is really just our leadership of the implementation of the Advanced Longmont Strategy and the collaborative Advanced Longmont Partners Group. Just to remind you all, the Advanced Longmont Strategy has us focusing on an improved business climate, marketing for economic development, improved infrastructure, education and workforce development, quality of life, and entrepreneurship and innovation, as they all relate to our opportunities for economic development and assets for economic development within the community. The priorities of that strategy are marketing and branding, building inventory, redevelopment, and entrepreneurship, and so we'll address how we're focusing on those different priorities of the Advanced Longmont Strategy. Our other areas of focus include advancing our primary industry, advancing our local businesses, and advancing our startup community, and we'll talk about all of those categories as we go through the report this evening. Okay, so the Advanced Longmont Strategy, as I mentioned, focuses on the priorities of marketing and branding, building inventory, redevelopment, and entrepreneurship, and we work with a collaborative group of what we call the Advanced Longmont Partners in order to implement tactics that were identified as part of the development of the Advanced Longmont Strategy. And so some of the 2015 key accomplishments of the Advanced Longmont Partners Group are the ongoing collaboration between the partners to execute the implementation tactics that are identified in the plan, as well as the successful planning and execution of the first ever Longmont Startup Week, completion of our internal marketing strategy, and launch of New Tech Longmont, completion of an opportunity analysis to determine how we can further fund the plan activities, as well as a successful application for enterprise zone designation within the community. We also had the, were awarded a CDFA Brownfields Marketplace Project Site Team Visit based on an application that was completed in collaboration with several of the Advanced Longmont Partners, hosted the Metro Denver Site Selection Tour at the Innovation Center, and saw the return of the Longmont Real Estate Showcase. All of those are related to tactics that are within the implementation strategy of the Advanced Longmont Plan. To remind you, the Advanced Longmont Partners are represented by the logos that you see here, and so in 2016 we'll continue our focus on collaborative efforts between all of those partners to implement the tactics that are identified in the Advanced Longmont Strategy. Further in 2016, we'll step up our focus on pursuing targeted industries and growing those targeted industry clusters within the Longmont Community. To remind you, the targeted industries are advanced technology, bioscience, creative arts and culinary, and professional services in IT. Part of that strategy and part of our commitment to you all through our contract with the city of Longmont is to pursue outbound prospect trips to other markets within the country that present the best opportunity for us to attract new businesses to Longmont and create an awareness of the environment here that's supportive of these targeted industries. And so we've identified several opportunities over the course of 2016 to visit other markets in the country, either representing the community at targeted industry trade shows, or through meetings with site selectors and corporate real estate decision makers across the country. As it relates to primary industry, we wanted to provide a report of the activities of 2015, this information is included in the report that was in your packet, as of today, or as of the end of 2015, we had 221 primary employers located within the city of Longmont, and 12,321 primary jobs within the city of Longmont. In 2015, 11 new companies located in Longmont, adding 147 new jobs, 15 companies closed or relocated out of the city of Longmont resulting in a loss of 868 primary jobs, and 57 of our existing companies added employees resulting in 1,538 new jobs being created, and 50 existing companies cut back employment resulting in a loss of 823 jobs. So total for the year is a net loss of jobs, of six jobs. We do have an active pipeline of 32 active prospects with the potential to bring 960 new primary jobs to Longmont, and we've had 14 announcements that have been made to date that will bring over 500 new jobs to the city of Longmont, so those are companies who have announced they are coming to Longmont, starting in Longmont, growing in Longmont, but haven't actually created those jobs yet. And so to give a little simpler view, and also make sure that we're looking at this kind of relative to the environment that we're in currently, and kind of the history of Longmont and job creation, and Longmont provided some, a couple of charts here for you, and pointed out a couple of highlights from what we've seen over the last year, and so you can see the math here of the 147 net new jobs created through new locations, and 1,538 through expansions, and then the closures and reductions resulting in a net loss of six jobs. However, on a positive note, we did see the highest number of jobs created by our existing industry that we've seen in the last 10 years of collected data on primary job creation in Longmont. We also want to point out that of the job losses, about exactly 50% of them are related to two companies either closing or downsizing within the community. And so while the goal is obviously overall net new job creation, and we've been relatively flat in that over the last couple of years, the fact that we lost, basically lost two companies and over 800 jobs as a result, and we're able to backfill those within less than a year with new jobs and new companies, shows the resiliency, I think, of the community, as well as the benefits of pursuing a strategy that diversifies our economy, so we're not dependent on just one or two industries, or one or two large employers to maintain the jobs within the community. Also like to point out that the fact that we had 1,538 new jobs created by our existing industry also shows the value of pursuing a strategy that focuses as much on growing our own as it does bringing new companies in from other locations. On the business retention and expansion side, through the fourth quarter of 2015, we did have, staff did have meetings with 72 of our primary employers, which exceeded our contractual metric of 50. 14 of those primary employer meetings happened during the fourth quarter of this year, and city staff was able to attend nine of those meetings in partnership with us. We're currently working with eight existing employers on expansion projects that could add another 150 new jobs to Longmont. Advanced Local Business speaks to our focus, our new focus this year on supporting the local business community, which are basically our service sector and retail businesses that support the local community, that support other businesses and the residents here locally within Longmont. And so I have some comparisons here from 2015 to 2014 to show the activity of our organization versus the activity that happened the previous year prior to our organization taking over these activities. So in 2014, zero business improvement grants were issued, the same in 2015, we are reevaluating the criteria and the types of businesses that can be awarded grants, and we'll be bringing some recommendations to the city on how we improve those grants, so they are utilized this year and in future years. However, with our other two grant programs, the Business Startup Grant and the Retail Conversion Grant, we saw significantly more activity this year, and were able to deploy significantly more funds into the community than what happened in the previous year. So in 2014, there were two business startup grants issued totaling $4,000, in 2015, that was eight business startup grants totaling $18,000. Retail conversion grants in 2014 were zero as well, and in 2015 they were four totaling $30,000. Also with our partnership with the Small Business Development Center, in 2014, we offered, or we provided 613 consulting hours to local small businesses, in 2015, we increased that to 892 consulting hours. We actually contracted with the SBDC to provide 600 hours, so significantly exceeded the contract that we have with, or that you all have with the SBDC. In 2014, there were eight small business workshops offered within the community, attended by 100 people, and in 2015, we increased that to 18 workshops that were attended by 259 people. And so the local impact of the partnership with the Small Business Development Center and the consulting and workshop, workshops that are offered to our local small businesses, were 111 jobs created, this is based on a survey of the companies that received these services. 111 jobs created, 117 retained, nearly $6 million in capital formation, over a half a million dollars in increased sales, $12,851 in contract awards received, and 12 new businesses started. We unfortunately don't have local impact numbers for 2014, but we'll use these 2015 numbers as a baseline going forward. In addition to the SBDC partnership and grant activities, we also awarded $5,000 in destination boot camp scholarships to local businesses, and helped process over $300,000 in small business loans through the Small Business Lending Program to 13 businesses with an average loan amount of over $25,000. Met with 176 existing and prospective local businesses, 10% of them considered multicultural, and conducted 16 in-depth interviews in partnership with the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, which that survey has turned into what we will use for a pilot program of surveying a broader range of our local businesses, similar to the program that we have to survey our primary industry, and have been successfully conducting for over 20 years. In relation to our activities to support the startup community here in Longmont, we were one of the original founders of the New Tech Longmont, the new New Tech Meetup that has located here in Longmont, it has been by all accounts wildly successful, we've had four New Tech meetups now, and have had in excess of 100 attendees at those events with the exception of December, when we had a blizzard on the day of the New Tech Meetup, and actually had 70 attendees still come out in a blizzard to attend our event. Our next New Tech Longmont event, and again, this is a partnership program with the Longmont Economic Development Partnership and Startup Longmont, and I'm forgetting at least one.
Museum.
Oh, and the Longmont Museum. And our next event will be in February, in relation to aerospace technology, on February 17th. If you have not had opportunity to attend one of the New Tech events, I would highly encourage you to do so. Over 60% of attendance tends to be from outside of Longmont, and with each panel that we do, we're able to highlight Longmont technology companies, Longmont technology leaders, and so it's a really good way to create that external awareness of what's going on in the tech environment here in Longmont. We're also actively working with Startup Longmont on the planning and coordination of Longmont Startup Week 2016, which will happen June 6th through 12th of this year, and we have just started participating on, with the Ignite Longmont Grant Committee, and are working with them on kind of the process and criteria for those grants, so that we can make sure that we're creating the most value possible to companies receiving those grants. And with that, I will answer, oh, I did have one other thing I wanted to point out, Joan, Councilwoman Peck pointed out to me that there was an error on our balance sheet that was provided in your packet, there's an item reported as other prepaid assets, which should actually have been reported as a depreciable asset on our balance sheet, so that will be corrected in the future.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you very much for that, Jessica, I love the PowerPoint, and I was wondering if you could send it to us.
Yes, absolutely.
That would be great. Also, the Ignite Longmont, can you tell me what that is?
Sure, it was formerly, or it was originally referred to as the, or named the Longmont Entrepreneurial Fund within a separate component that was Ignite Longmont, and so the Longmont Entrepreneurial Fund is a fund that's managed by the Longmont Community Foundation, that individuals in the community can contribute into, and those funds are dispersed as grants to startup companies here in Longmont. And then those startup companies, when they receive a grant, commit to, once they become a business and become profitable, returning some of that revenue back into the fund, so that it can fund future startup companies. And then the Ignite piece of it originally was so that donors to the fund would have an opportunity to invest in those businesses, once they became viable businesses that they would be interested in investing in, and basically they've combined it all together, and it's now, the whole program is now referred to as Ignite Longmont.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thanks, I like this PowerPoint too, it's very helpful, and it'll be great to get that. I'm looking for the number of, you have the number of primary employer jobs, but I'm looking for the small business jobs.
Sure, so we have historically only reported on primary employer numbers, I did provide the impact numbers for the small business services that we've provided, which are really the numbers that we have at the local level right now, and we're actually in the process of acquiring a data source that will provide us with significant data on all types of jobs across all industries, and wages, and things like that, and so future reports will be able to provide more detail about all jobs, so starting actually with the second quarter report, or I'm sorry, the first quarter report this year, we just don't have access to that data as of yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And actually, we can report that to you prior to the next quarterly report, once we have access to that data, we can go ahead and create a report that reflects all jobs within the community, absolutely.
Well, no questions, but just an observation that, you know, having a diverse workforce, diverse set of jobs is, it does make you a healthier community, it's like having a diverse investment portfolio, or a diverse amount of energy sources at your platform or power, it's a diversity is a good thing, and the fact that we lost two major companies with lots and lots of employees, and came back and only fell six jobs short is, I think, pretty remarkable, so I'm impressed with, that we're on the right track, and, you know, nothing is, gets done overnight, you know, the strategies you put in sometimes will take four or five years to actually come to full fruition, so thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, you know, that's really quite an impressive report for what you've done in 2015, and I want to thank you and your staff for all your hard work, we really needed it, and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, I think, I don't see any other questions, good job, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for public invited to be heard, and the first person up is Steve Allen, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Before I get started, anyway, my name is Steve Allen, I live at 1127 Twin Peaks, I just wanted to thank the council for allowing this forum, I greatly appreciate it. Also too, I want to say I hope you all appreciated the Broncos win as much as I did this weekend, and hope they didn't take quite as much time off your life as they did off mine. Anyway, I'm here to talk about Mile High, and I'm really surprised that the city council and the mayor are considering extending the lease to this company that has proven to be so unreliable in paying its financial obligations to the city of Longmont. This kind of corporate welfare is just not good for the city. The fact that this company continues to ignore its financial obligations to the city and pay whenever and whatever it feels like, is clearly a statement on how poorly this company is managed. If you do consider extending the lease, I think you need to put some real teeth into the lease. If I missed a payment on my house, I can guarantee you the bank would not be as forgiving as we have to this company. I think you need to I think you need to put in things for real hard penalties for them missing payments, as well as being able to cancel their lease on a moment's notice. In general, I find it disconcerting that we continue to support industries that add lots of pollution to our community, where the real money in future for this community is in telecommunications. Major corporations are turning to companies like Google and applications like GoToMeeting, which really are the future of how companies are going to communicate and manage their corporations in the future. We need to spend, and continue to spend money in our telecommunication network and stop supporting industries that constantly pollute and really add no real financial benefit to the bottom line of our company. Corporations are selling off their jets and looking to telecommunication. Let's get that network out there, let's make it reliable, and let's look to the future and not the past in industries that continue to take money from our company, our communities, and our citizens.
Excuse me, your three minutes is up when the red light comes on.
Or there was a yellow light.
Oh, okay. From, from this.
But thank you, I was done.
From this angle, it's straight on, there.
There we go.
That's actually, that's better. Why we didn't see you there, that's why you're in charge.
All right. The next person up is John, let's see, Behrens?
It's unpronounceable, I'm sorry. Mayor Coombs, City Council. My name is John Behrens. My name is John Behrens. I live at 904 Little Leaf Court in Longmont, one and a half mile south of the airport. The thought that the city of Longmont will soon conclude a lease agreement with Mile High Skydiving puts me in a state of dread for the upcoming summer and for the years to come. Why is this so frightening? The residents of Western Longmont and the countryside west of Longmont have for years been forced to suffer noise pollution on an enormous scale, a scale that exceeds the noise limits for neighbors set by the city of Longmont, for neighborhoods that was set by the city of Longmont. No other community on the front range has to tolerate the loud, pulsing, seemingly endless drone that we have to suffer for hours each day during the warm months of the year. There are other noise makers, loud motorcycles, trains, leaf floors, but no other noise source. Only the skydive plane noise goes on and on, hour and hour after hour, 10 to 12 hours a day, day after day. This is a growing problem for hundreds of people in the area who deserve the relative peace that all other communities enjoy, and that includes, and that includes communities with airports. It is a problem for hundreds of residents who hate the noise but cannot move, who see no point in complaining because Mile High will do nothing, the airport will do nothing, and the city will apparently do nothing. Mile High Skydiving, despite claims that it has always tried to be a good neighbor, has shown no willingness to do anything to mitigate the noise of its planes. We know they can fly quietly. They proved that before a gullible judge last year. The skydiving community has only nasty disdain for people who dare to complain. A common comment by them is, "If you don't like the noise, move." City council knows what a bad act or Mile High has been, but their fallback has always been, "Our hands are tied by the FAA." Well, this is not true. The FAA recommends, and I quote, "A steeply sloped noise fee would offer disincentive for continued use of the noisiest aircraft." Mr. Mayor and City Council, I strongly urge for the noisiest planes impose a landing fee as recommended by the FAA to try to compel Mile High to fly more quietly. Second, hire an independent agency to monitor flights and noise levels. That cost can be covered by the landing fees. Finally, review their lease annually, adjusting landing fees based upon noise behaviors. This annual fee can, this annual review should include community members adversely affected by Mile High Skydiving. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, you have an opportunity, I think an obligation, to defend the public against unreasonable noise. The airports and other recreational planes are not the problem. All we ask is relief from excessive noise created by one commercial operation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Georgetta Johnston at 619 Kimbark Street, and I'm changing the subject for a moment, that we are needing a house, and we are supposed to be out the first, and we're still looking. We've been looking, and I also put it on Craigslist, which somebody asked me to, and so far, we still haven't got anywhere. So, there's got to be a house for us. My husband was on dialysis today, and he isn't feeling good, so he apologizes that he can't be here. But I know with all you people going out looking and with the landlords in different places, there's got to be a house for us. We don't ask that you to be on housing where we can't pay and we can't do our part. There's got to be a solution to work for us. So, I feel like that, it says up there, "You belong to Longmont, Colorado," and we don't want to move out of Longmont. We've been here for 60-some years or more. I was born in Fruta, but I've lived here all my life. So, I'm believing that you're some way, somehow, something's going to work out for us, a house that we need. Thank you very much for letting me talk to you. Lord bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. My name is Kimberly Gibbs, and I live at 7468 Mount Sherman Road in Gunbarrel. On behalf of Citizens for Quiet Skies, I would like to speak about the Mile High lease and the skydiving noise. Before I go on, I would like to ask the audience members who are supporters, who support reasonable regulations to address the airplane noise issue, to please stand, so we can get a good Thank you. This seems an odd time of year to discuss the noise. It's cold outside, people are inside, and it's been relatively quiet in my neighborhood, eight miles from the airport. But when it warms up, Mile High will be operating up to three turboprops concurrently for 12 or more hours a day, every Saturday and Sunday. The 23-passenger twin otters create an inescapable blanket of noise over much of North Boulder County. They are inappropriate aircraft for frequent use over populated areas. Some will claim that the noise only bothers a few people. Here's just a sample of the comments from our petition, and I'll hand you a hundred or so sample comments, so you can decide for yourself. For five years now, Quiet Skies has been seeking a solution to the noise problem. Mile High owner Frank Casares has consistently refused to make any adjustments to reduce noise from his operation. You'll recall that when we complained about the noise, Mr. Casares mailed "I love airplane noise" bumper stickers to us. That's old news. At the trial last year, a Mile High pilot testified under oath that Mr. Casares buzzed my home in retaliation repeatedly. The full transcript is available on our website at citizensforquietskies.org. During the judge's site visit, they flew to Lyons in order to avoid making any noise near the judge. And for five years now, I have been the target of vicious harassment by Mile High employees and supporters aimed at shouting us down. You should see for yourself, you should check out the Facebook page, Citizens Against Citizens for Quiet Skies. Mile High Skydiving has behaved like a schoolyard bully. Please note my strong opposition to the lease. Let's move forward with updating the minimum standards and other regulations. You can limit or deny use of airport property as a parachute landing area. We're working on a letter from Congress that we hope will help clarify your authority as the airport proprietor. We want to be, we want to work with you cooperatively to help solve this problem. You can adopt landing fees that discourage noisy aircraft. The Santa Monica Airport does this successfully. We're asking you to find a way to solve this problem, and if you can't fix the noise problem, then close the airport and put that land to use that benefits the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Ray Cooper. I live at 1009 Box Elder Circle in southwest Longmont. I'm here as well to speak about the Mile High lease that's being considered. I joined Citizens for Quiet Skies last year, and that was due to just the degraded quality of life living in the area that I live. I hear a lot from people that the airport was there first. They put a stake in the ground and say the airport was there first, and I think, how do I rebut that? How do I say that, yes, the airport was there, but, you know what, I have a stake in Longmont, too, and I think there's a lot of families, there's a lot of homes, a lot of people that are putting their stakes in the ground and saying, "I have a stake in Longmont, too. I have a stake in equality of life that I want to lead in this city." Well, how many families are there? People have mentioned hundreds. I called the St. Van Valley School District today, because there are six schools, three elementary, two middle, and one high school, within approximately four-mile radius of the airport, and the current enrollment in those six schools is over 4,000 students. So, I would assume from that, there are 10, 15,000 residents living in that area. All of them may, may not like the sound of the noise, but there's a lot more than hundreds. And that area is going to continue to grow, as you know, as you approve developments, as Google moves into Boulder and other things are happening, and we become a community of high-tech workers who want to enjoy their weekends at home with their families, enjoying a good quality of life. I think we all have a stake in the city of Longmont. We all have a stake in how it's run and how it operates, and I think even though the airport was there first, I have a stake and an ability to say, "I want to enjoy my backyard on weekends, free from the sound of all-day droning of Mile High, Mile High Skydiving planes," because that's what I hear. So, what is the solution? We've heard a lot of solutions tonight. There's a lease up. I think it's a long-term lease, would like to see that as shorter-term lease, and many other solutions. But at the end of the day, the solution needs to reinforce that we all have a stake in the city of Longmont, we all have a say in the quality of life, and we deserve to have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Suzanne Webble, 5735 Prospect Road, Longmont. I just want to ask you all a few questions about your recollection of the last month or so's weather. Pretty cold, pretty nasty, everybody was grumpy, and everyone's been looking forward to the few days of sunshine and warmer temperatures that we've had this past weekend, right? Well, for those of us who live under the pattern of the Mile High flight path, it's great news when it's bad weather, because they can't fly. But we're still as grumpy as everybody else, because we have to be indoors because the weather's bad, but at least it's quiet. So, you all probably looked forward to when it was getting warmer, and we dreaded it because it would bring out the plane, and that's exactly what happened this last week. Saturday was unbearable, because the twin otter was droning over and over and over again in our neighborhoods. It is not okay. You've heard from so many other people this evening, "We're here to try to work with you to come up with a solution that we can all live with." It's really not that hard, and it's up to you to direct the airport, to direct their laissez, to work with us to solve the problem. Otherwise, it's not going to happen. So, I urge you to do exactly that. Let's all work together to find a solution, but we cannot continue to tolerate the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for giving me this opportunity. I'm Stuart Mayby, 8512 North 79th Street. I've been at that location for approximately 20 years, and had purchased that property well before that, approximately seven years before that, and all the time until, I would guess about eight or nine years ago, no skydiving in this area, and it never bothered me. I could see them going up and jumping, and the noise was never objectionable. But now, since they've gone to the twin otters and the turboprop planes, literally anywhere in my house, when they're flying, I can hear the noise of their operations. And I work from my home, and that's, makes it sometimes quite difficult to concentrate. And I think that noise of that impact anywhere else would long ago have been curtailed, and I think that you should seriously consider denying this lease, and if not, then I think you should try to put conditions on the lease, which will allow fines or fees or whatever to prevent the noise from being the incredible impact it is on the people who live in this area. As earlier speaker noted, you're building many more houses in this area. I've seen them subdivision after subdivision go up between me and the airport, and I can only imagine that there'd be many more thousands of people who no longer want to put up with this noise either. So, I urge you to either not renew the lease or put restrictions on it to control the amount of noise, so that those of us who are so severely impacted by it can go back to enjoying our lives before the noise got so bad. And I guess that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Ray Bovet. I live at 5735 Prospect Road, Longmont, unincorporated Boulder County. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, like many of the people you've already heard tonight, I am constantly adversely affected by the noise of the Mile High skyjumping plane. I think one of the key points that I think you need to be very cognizant of is the impact this kind of thing is going to have on employment in the city. We heard a wonderful report tonight on the excellent work that's being done to make sure that there are good and adequate numbers of jobs in the city of Longmont. The new, the new economy is based very much on knowledge work and people who are going to demand amenities such as the right to peaceably enjoy their properties over the weekends in particular, but all the time. If Longmont persists in not doing something about protecting those, the peaceful enjoyment of people's properties, I'm absolutely convinced it's going to be very hard to attract new businesses to come into Longmont, and that's just one more reason why I think you should really jump on it and do something about this. Don't just renew another 12-year lease. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm Joanne Burton, and I live at 713 Snowberry. So, I own a house in southwest Longmont, a neighborhood that is growing in leaps and bounds. I consider myself and my family law-abiding citizens and honest taxpayers. Yes, I belong in Longmont. I am not here to give you facts and figures, you already have that. I am here to remind you of your responsibility as elected representatives of our city. We, the taxpayers who live in Longmont, own the airport. We are the landlord. Your role is to govern the city and uphold the rights of those you represent. This is what Lincoln meant when he said, "The government of, by, and for the people." As one of the taxpaying and partial owners of the airport, I am asking you, as elected representatives, not to renew the lease with Mile High Skydiving. I am a landlord as well, and I own a property in Gunbarrel. When a tenant does not abide by the lease, I do not renew it. With my rights, I can have a bad tenant evicted if necessary. My family moved to Longmont to live in a high-quality community that was financially affordable. Initially, we felt we made the right decision. In the last few years, the noise has been intolerable from the airplane- In the last few years, the noise has been intolerable from the airplanes flown by mile-high. Starting at 7:30 and 7:45 in the morning on the weekends and ending in the early evenings during the warmer weather is like sitting through an air raid. I make no joke. I feel that this has to stop. Feel free to step into Meadowview West Development, sit in the park, and enjoy the noise. So, yes, I can sell my house and move, but the housing development is increasing every day, and new taxpaying owners of the airport will be at your door demanding peace and quiet. Eleanor Roosevelt suggests that everybody does better when everybody does better. Well, now you have a handful of businesspeople and skydivers doing better at the expense of the southwest Longmont community. As a taxpaying Longmont citizen and partial owner of the airport, please do not renew the lease. Find new tenants. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Burton. I live with Joanne at 713 Snowberry Street, and we try to enjoy the nice, beautiful scenery that we have out there. You know, you have a wonderful view of the Longspreek and the Indian Peaks out there. You know, you got a typical Saturday morning, we're out there trying to read the paper, have a nice cup of coffee, and then [MURRISH]. Yeah. It's pretty annoying.
I didn't understand.
Yeah. Let me try again, Brian. Yeah. It's loud. It's really loud. We have this beautiful opportunity to enjoy nature out there. Can't do it. You know, and I got to say, I just don't get it. I really don't get it. This guy doesn't follow a lease. He doesn't, he ignores you, he doesn't pay his money, you want to give him another lease? Hello? I really don't get that. And then I got a question. I really got a question. So this guy doesn't like to follow the rules. He doesn't, he, he disses you guys all the time, doesn't show up for meetings, you know, he disses us, he buzzes people that he doesn't like, and, you know, you give him another lease? If he's not going to follow the rules that are already put on him, what makes you think he already follows the rules regarding safety? I got to question that, you know? We are increasing our density out in west Longmont. We really are. We're growing. And then we have these planes, [MURRISH], and we have this guy that doesn't follow the rules already. What do we know? How safe are those planes, really? Do not renew the lease.
Good evening, council. My name is Jeff Orbach. I live at 7714 Crestview Drive in Niwot. So I have endured the excessive and aggravating noise of mile-high skydiving aircraft over my home, the surrounding community, and Boulder County open space for many years as it has grown steadily worse. There is no reasonable escape from the skydiving aircraft noise, which is not like any other general aviation aircraft or cultural noise, in that it is persistent, loud, and primarily monotonic droning, which makes it much worse than other cultural noise sources and other transient aircraft noise, even if they are as loud. I live in a rural, in a rural part of Boulder County, over four miles from southeast of the airport, but the skydiving aircraft continuously circle from early morning to sunset, both low and high, over my home for much of the year on just about every good-weather day. My and others' quality of life have been severely negatively impacted by the steadily increasing flights from mile-high skydiving's noisy aircraft. The time has long passed for the FAA, the Longmont City Government, Airport Management, and mile-high skydiving to mitigate this problem. To date, none have been willing to do so. I and others who object to the noise are not just a bunch of complainers. This noise has a real tangible negative impact on my life, my family's life, my home, both indoors and outdoors, and degrades the enjoyment of living in this beautiful area. It is just not right or fair that one business and the recreational activities of a small minority should be allowed to negatively impact our community and life in this way. I urge you to consider and implement reasonable and appropriate measures that will mitigate this noise problem to, to create a better community for all of us. I urge you to take this into consideration in mile-high skydiving, skydiving's lease agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Please no clapping. Rick Dower?
Thank you, mayor. My name's Rick Dower. I live at 4019 Milano Lane in southwest Longmont. I was the first homeowner in the Renaissance community south of Clover Basin Road, and I was the first member of the board there in Renaissance. So I've lived there since 2000, and I just want to talk about the miserable state of affairs that has been created for the homeowners there in southwest Longmont and, and the surrounding county. I see this as a gross usurpation on behalf of the federal government of property owner's rights to practice peaceful enjoyment of their properties. This lease, I don't, I don't think should go forward in the way it's currently stated. I, I think two years is too long. I think some terms need to be put on for reviewing the lease. I would like to see that they require that they follow the airport's noise abatement procedures. Granted, they're voluntary, but he does not follow any of those noise abatement procedures, and in fact, he violates all of those. And another requirement would be to see, to have him demonstrate what he does to reduce noise. He claims to be a good neighbor. He does nothing to reduce noise. They are climbing as fast as they can, and on their website, they brag about how they can get you up to jump elevation twice as fast as any of their competitors, okay? That's what they're, that's what they're bragging on. That is noise in my ears, okay? He doesn't have to do that. If he took a flight every 45 minutes instead of every 30 minutes, okay, and that can be with four planes, that can be eight flights a day, and there's basically four sound patterns that happen when that, you know, it's continual noise, okay? If he didn't do it every 30 minutes, it probably wouldn't be an issue. Now, the Twin Otter is also another problem. That thing is just way too loud and shouldn't be allowed to be put in service above our, our homes. So once again, just to summarize, I think we need to put some conditions on that, have them follow the voluntary noise abatement procedures, and try to be a good neighbor, and, you know, let's hold a seat to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lori Bowman, 6675 Secretariat Drive, Longmont. And let's see here, I live four miles to the south of the airport with my husband. We live right next to the diagonal, and we are not bothered by that noise, which is significantly louder than the airplanes. I think each time you hear the airplanes go up, you should be, actually, it represents a number of people that have come to the area. It's tourism. They are enjoying it. My son has jumped. He has loved it. I completely support the lease being renewed, and I also love going to the airport. I love watching them. I love watching them jump. They are, it's really quite something to see, you know? I don't know if you've ever seen them come in, but it's an amazing sight. From what I've heard this evening, I do not hear, I, I feel that I'm the silent majority here. I don't, haven't heard any pros yet, and I'm not really hearing any compromises by the people that are presenting the cons for the lease. They just seem to want to eliminate it in general, which I think is completely unfair. It's, it's, it doesn't make sense to take someone's livelihood like that away. And my last comment, and I mean this with all due respect to council member Moore, I've read that you are against, you know, that you are against noise and that you are an ex-officio member of the advisory board, which means that you have been, that is how you became part of the group, as an ex-officio member. The advisory board's role is to, this is from the Longmont site here, to promote the development and utilization of the airport pursuant to the adopted master plan and airport, airport rules, and it seems to be a conflict of interest for you to be on the board. I think that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Kelly Mahoney, 708 Bluegrass Drive, 80503. Tonight, I want to discuss the Maha lease, some pros and cons, and leave you with a few points for improvements. I go by facts, so let's go through the lease section by section. So, section 2.1, and thank you for making it a 12-year lease. That's critical in showing your support to the community. Section 3.1, there's no date given on when the first payment is required. For a company that makes late payments, it would be best for the city to specify a deadline. Along the same lines, section 3.4, I'm concerned that the city will continue accepting late payments. According to the records at the clerk's office, all payments were late for that three-month temporary lease that ended June 2015. The May payment was a month late. That's not acceptable. Please stop accepting late payments from habitual offenders. Section 4, authorized use. If we go back to the site plan waiver and change of use application that was approved in May 2012, Mr. Casares writes regarding the tent, quote, "This will be used as a packing tent, the largest number of people at one time, 10 to 15." He also writes, "Under the day and hours of operation, Thursday through Monday, 8:30 a.m. to 8 p.m." During the summer, Mile High flies three planes, which definitely involves more than 15 people at one time, and Mile High sure does fly outside that timeframe. My point, what is Mile High's authorized use of this land in packing tent? These inconsistencies need to be addressed, and can the city just keep ignoring previously signed agreements? Section 9, mayor and council, for transparency, have you or will you verify that Mile High has provided all certificates of insurance to Mr. David Slater prior to the start of the date of this lease? And my most important observation, section 13, one paraphrasing, "Leasey shall comply with airport rules and regulations, including but not limiting to the airport's noise abatement's procedures." But the noise abatement procedures are voluntary. This lease does not address the noise issues. I was told to be patient in the last seven months with the ongoing negotiations, but this lease continues to neglect noise issues. It's a good starting point for this lease, but there are areas for improvement, and I hope you consider my comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ron Krenzel, 12191 North 61st. I, it's interesting to, Longmont, Colorado. It's interesting to listen to this small group of delusional people who have continued to cause this problem for the airport. Kimberly has done a very good job of dragging these people through, and the city, through countless lawsuits and, and costs. I have nothing whatsoever to do with mile-high skydiving. I have an airplane at the airport, and I'm a pilot. I think it's time that you, the council, stop listening to these people and get over it. There are 96,000 people in the city of Longmont, and we have 10 or 15 with some sort of hearing disorders who continue to berate mile-high skydiving, who does a fantastic job of running a business. If, if they can't find a way to live their life without causing the city and the airport continuing problems, that's their problem, really, isn't it? Kimberly has continued to state in her long mission is to, is to downgrade aviation. Mile-high skydiving is just her first target, and if you look at their website and you look at their Facebook page, she has grander plans, and the people that she has enlisted to support her, I don't think they understand that. If there are people that really have problems with skydiv, with the noise, they can probably get some help with that, but you, the city council in this, in Longmont, the airport is a great asset, and we need to get over letting mile-high skydiving and Kimberly Gibbs and her animosity towards aviation stop that growth. Thanks.
Wow, this is great. Hi, my name's Scott Stewart, 229 Grant Street. Yeah, I'm real close to Old Town. I'm not out in the woods, what have you, when my house is affected. I don't wish to be considered a nuisance. I've made three calls to the airport. I've requested return calls each time. One call has been returned, so that's, I, I try not to be a nuisance. I'm not going to call you every time I have a problem, and frankly, I only have problems when I'm, you know, trying to enjoy my backyard. I get it. I've jumped. It's fun. It's a great time. I'm not bothered by mile-high all the time. Only those beautiful days that I'm trying to enjoy my backyard or sleep with my windows open. I would rather be home right now with my kids, but I find myself voicing my concerns here about my quality of life here in this beautiful town. I've been here over 15 years. Mile-high has been referred to as a good neighbor. I have good neighbors. Mile-high's not one of them. Good neighbors, good neighbors are considerate. They don't run the lawnmower when you're trying to have a barbecue with your friends. Mile-high pretty much does this repetitively on the weekends. Good landlords, good landlords screen tenants and set boundaries for the use of their property. They also listen to their neighbors, listen to the neighbors that are affected by those tenants and the issues that they, they cause. Bad landlords, bad landlords usually are not being personally affected by the bad tenant's behavior. Bad landlords continue with bad tenants because it's not, it's not always easy to make the The repetitive behavior of mile-high operations, which seem to have no limits, this means, this means relief for those, those of us who would just like to enjoy their own property, no relief for those of us who'd just like to enjoy our own property. I'd like to sleep with my windows open. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Sullivan, 3830 Florentine Circle. Thank you for letting us speak tonight, and thank you for your service to the beautiful city of Longmont. I don't have any huge, profound things to say to you guys. I just wanted to speak on behalf of my support of Citizens for Quiet Skies. We've been here for 14 years, and the noise has really become, it's, when we first moved, it was pretty cool to watch the parachuters, and there was not a noise problem, but over the years, it's becoming worse and worse and worse, and I think it's because of the Twin Otters. And I can't even sit outside on our patio when they're like flying during the summertime and have a conversation with my husband this far away. I, I can't hear his voice, he can't hear my voice. I'm just, I'm sick of it. I hear it in my house, even with the TV on, with the radio on, it's a constant noise, and it's driving us crazy, and we're not sensitive. People mow their lawns, dogs bark. It stops. The drone does not stop, and that, I think, is what everybody's just asking for here. Can't we just come up with a compromise? And I've heard many compromises from people from Citizens Skies tonight. Maybe others haven't heard that, but I've heard many. So I'm just here to say, please, I'm a normal citizen, this is the first time speaking at a city council. at a city council meeting, and I care. I care about my neighbors, and I care about my own quality of life, too. And I want to sit out and look at Long's Peak because we have a beautiful view, too. But I don't in the summertime because it's too loud. So I just ask you to please find some kind of compromise to help us love Longmont again. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Well, that ends our first call, public invited to be heard. So now we move to the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on your consent agenda is Ordinance 2016-06, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for February 9. Item 8B is Ordinance 2016-07 and 08. There's two different ordinances. They are land development code amendments. The first one, Ordinance 07, is a bill for an ordinance amending chapters 1503, 1504, and 1510 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding mining and public and planned unit development mixed-use zoning districts. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for February 9. The second one of the land development code amendments is Ordinance 08, which is a bill, excuse me, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 1507040 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Cluster Lot Subdivision. The public hearing also scheduled for February 9. We have pulled Item 8C and are sending it back to the Airport Advisory Board. Item 8D is October, I'm sorry, Ordinance 2016-10, a bill for an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 1104 of the Longmont Municipal Code Regarding Bicycle Equipment. Public hearing scheduled for February 9. Item 8E is Resolution 2016-07, approving the 2016 Classification and Pay Plan for the City Employees. Item 8F is Resolution 2016-08, approving future intergovernmental agreements in 2016 between the city and the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Forces Program for the Use of Local Overtime and Authorized Expense Strategic Initiative Program. Item 8G is Resolution 2016-09, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the city of Colorado Springs for an Internet Crimes Against Children grant. Item 8H is authorized the use of a parking space in the 600 West Parking Lot for EGO Car Share. Item 8I is accept five capital improvement program amendments approved by the city manager. Those are listed on your agenda. And Item 8J is approve the gazebo permit fee rebate for B.C. services, and staff would like to pull Item, let's see, 8B, which is, which are the land development code amendments.
Councilmember Peck?
I'd like to pull Item 8A.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move the consent agenda minus A, B, and C.
All right. Do we have a second? Well, C's been pulled off, so it's just A and B. Okay. All right, let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor Coombs, Item 8A is the vacation of a utility easement, and I believe that Don Burchette?
Don't we?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have second reading. We have second reading first. That's what I'm looking at.
Well, don't we deal with?
No, since we changed the order of the agenda, that comes later.
Okay, got it.
Sorry. Don, you'll have to wait. But you're still this one. Ordinance is on second reading is Ordinance 2016-04, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a utility easement generally located north of Nelson Road and west of South Fordham Street. And we do not have a formal staff presentation on this, but Don is here to answer questions if you have any. Sorry.
Councilmember Peck, you pulled it, so what questions do you have?
No, this one is, no.
This is the second reading. We switched the order of our agenda last week, remember?
Okay, all right. I'm with you now, so we're.
So we're not coming back? Oh, that's right. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So if we don't have any questions on Ordinance 2016-04, I'll open up this for the public hearing. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak on Ordinance 2014-04? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-04. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move the passage of Ordinance 2016-04.
Let's vote on that. All right, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent.
Next item is Ordinance 2016-05, which is a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Vanceboro Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H30 to the Johnson Family Trust. We do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-05. Anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Signal and I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-05. Councilmember Moore?
I move Ordinance 2016-05.
All right, this moved in second, and let's vote. Councilmember Peck, we're waiting for your vote. Okay. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, first item on those items removed from consent agenda is 8A, which is the additional appropriations ordinance, and that would be Teresa here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Councilmember Peck?
This is just a question to enlighten me, I guess, on how this works. If I understand it correctly, the books for 2015 are going to be closed out in March. Is that correct? Is this one on now? Yeah. Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, it will be around the March-April timeframe. Correct. So my question on the summary of the 2015 budgeted expenditures by fund that I'm looking at, we have all the total appropriations for 2015 for each fund. And if I understand this correctly from my explanation from the city manager, the funds that are in the appropriations are actually capital improvement funds. Is that correct for each fund? Those are for capital improvements, the appropriations? So are you referring to our CIP, our capital improvement program? Yes. And so the way that that works is you all, council adopts a five-year CIP. The first year of that five-year CIP gets rolled into our operating budget, and so you do see it in these appropriations. Correct. I just wanted you to make that clear. So my question is, if the books have not been closed out for 2015, how do we know how much of the appropriations from 2015 have actually been spent? So. To date. So that is a great question, and we don't. We do not have the total 2015 expenditures. We won't until accounting is finished doing their year-end work in the March-April timeframe. Okay. So if we don't know how many out of these funds, the total of 432,866,000 and some change, have not been actually used in 2015, how do we, how do we come to give more appropriations in 2016, not knowing what has been spent and what's left over from 2015? So that's another great question. So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, so what's included in this appropriation at this time is not carryover from prior years. What's being included in this appropriation for those CIP projects is dollars above and beyond what will need to be carried over and what was appropriated in 2016, so that they can award contracts in 2016. I don't know if that makes sense. It does make sense, but I was wondering, wouldn't it be more appropriate to do this after the books are closed, in another month or two, instead of now? So Councilmember Peck, the carryover will definitely be done, but what's going to come in the carryover are funds that are committed to current contracts. What we're needing to appropriate for tonight is funding to initiate new contracts. Yeah, I understand that. It's just, okay. I'm just having a little trouble understanding. So the funds that are not used in the 2015 appropriations, do they go back into the capital improvement fund? That is, that is correct. So. We don't know what the carryover is going to be because the books haven't been closed. Correct. And again, what's going to be included in that carryover appropriation will be funds to cover existing contracts, contracts that were awarded in 15, and the budget was in 15 for that purpose. Those will be carried over into 16. What this is doing is appropriating additional dollars beyond what was adopted in our 2016 budget so that we can initiate a new contract for different work. Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
So if I can add to that, part of, we can't initiate a contract unless there's funds appropriated for that contract. And so that's, this is a new project that's in this carryover piece that I think is different than the question about the carryovers related to the existing CIPs.
Okay, and those projects then are actually defined in the report? That is correct. Okay, so the different projects that this new money's being appropriated for is in the report. So it is for three projects? Yes. And that's on that second page of the council communication for you. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
I move Ordinance 2016-06 on the consent agenda.
It's been moved in second, and let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor Coombs, the next item pulled from consent was Ordinance 2007 and 2008, which are your land development code amendments, and Don Burchette now can make his presentation on those.
Trick me twice, I'm not going to get tricked three times, so then I'd look foolish. So, Mayor, members of council, Don Burchette with Planning and Development Services, here to talk to you tonight about two proposed changes to our land development code. We pulled these tonight just because we felt that we wanted to make sure that the council had a good understanding before second reading of where this is coming from and then some of the impacts that this could have. As a little background for those people that are viewing at home or here in the council chambers or the new council member who may not know how we got to this point. Last year, we had an annexation referral for some properties that are along the St. Rain River Corridor, both out near the airport and then out towards the east along the stretch behind Harvest Junction, where Best Buy and Lowe's and all those are out there on the east side of town. The property owner is looking at bringing those properties in and ultimately would like to develop them. One of the items that we discussed at the meeting with the city council is that one of, or one, two of the annexation areas, specifically out east along the river, currently have approved through Boulder County the ability to mine the properties and remove the gravel that is on those properties that's adjacent to the river. So they have already gone through the Boulder County process. Boulder County has already approved them to be able to mine and to reclaim the property. And the property owner still wants to annex to the city, but also wants to be able to mine those properties. The discussion that we had at the city council meeting when this came through referral was that the city currently does not allow for mining, and again, from the mining that we're talking about is for sand and gravel on these properties, not for oil, gas, or any other kind of item that you might mine for. It didn't, that is spelled out in the ordinance for the definition for mining. But again, the concern was that if we annexed the properties, the owner would not be able to do this mining of those properties. So we asked the council whether or not you were interested in allowing these projects to move through the annexation referral process. We asked what you wanted us to look at from the standpoint of, should we move forward and not allow mining? Should we move forward and try to come up with mining regulations, try to figure out a way to allow this to occur? The feedback that we received was that you wanted us to proceed with the annexation and try to figure out a way that we could allow for the mining of that property within the city. So one of the ordinances that you have tonight, which is, again, in your packet, is for the changes to the city's land development code to allow for mining. Now, the way that we have set this up is that mining would only be allowed on two types of property within the city of Longmont. The first type of zoning that it would be allowed on would be on city property, property that the city owns and city has that's owned public. And an example of that is that currently, right now, we do have some mining that's going on on the south side of Sandstone Ranch, that when we bought the property, it was, had the allowance for people to mine that property. They've been mining that, removing the gravel. Right now, we have not annexed some of those parcels in the past, partly because we didn't want to create non-conforming uses and have problems with zoning that would not allow for that to occur. So one of the things that it would do is, one, it would allow us to do some of the policy things that we have done with the council through the years, which has been to try to annex in properties that the city owns and that we control to get them within our land use jurisdiction. This would still allow for the mining to occur. On a publicly zoned property, it would be a limited use site plan, which would mean that that would be a staff-level review. We could put conditions on that request, and if determined by the planning director that there were, was a need for a public hearing, she could bump that up to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, which then could be appealed to the city council, if it was to be appealed. So from a public zone property standpoint, we feel that that was a way to allow the use to occur, allow us to be able to put conditions and restrictions on that use and still allow it to occur. One of the reasons why we have included the public zoning as well is that a portion of the property that we currently own, that is to the east of the Harvest Junction property, when we bought it, it already had the mining lease on it. The owner of those minerals has the right to go in there right now and be able to mine that. That was approved through the Boulder County process. So when we annexed, we would expect that property would be zoned public, which is how we try to zone our properties when we bring them into the city. And then we would be able to review that request and approve that mining on that property. The second zone that we would look at putting the, allowing mining on is the planned unit development mixed-use zoning district. The way that it's written right now is that the planned unit development mixed-use district would only allow for the use of mining to occur if it was approved by council at the time the zoning was put on the property. That would either be at annexation or if somebody came in and wanted to change the zoning to PUDMU. That's the only time they could ask for the use of mining. It's also called out that it has to be an interim use, that that's, process is going to be, have a conclusion, and it is going to have a reclamation, and then hopefully it will also have another use after the reclamation, whether that be open space, whether that be future development, it would still allow for that. The planned unit development mixed-use zoning district would require that the use, as long as council said it was a use that was allowed with the zoning, it would still have to go through a preliminary development plan process through the city, which requires a public hearing before the planning commission and is also appealable up to the city council. Through the PUD process, we would be able to apply restrictions and conditions on the development of that property. And again, if any of the neighbors or citizens had concerns, they would have that ability to. they would have that ability to appeal it back to the city council, who originally gave the zoning and gave the ability for that to be requested. Final development plan would ultimately need to be approved. That would be a staff level review to make sure that any conditions, restrictions put on, either by council through the appeal or through planning commission were implemented. So from the standpoint of the changes that we're talking about, again, the primary ones that you'll see in the ordinance again is the change to allow it in a PUD plan as an interim use for, and to have a plan for future reclamation, definition of mining. And then in addition to the use matrix, which makes mining a limited use in the P public zoning district. So before I get into the second ordinance, I would like you to see if you have any questions on that first that I can answer.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The only question I have is, this has not been, statement then question. This has not been a very publicly debated issue, which surprises me. You know, mining, you know, it just does. I guess the only question I have, given that there has not been any opposition, we haven't spent a whole lot of time debating it, talking about it, other than when Mr. Golden came three or four months ago, I guess, we kind of talked about it. I have not read all the ordinance. My question is for you, Mr. May, and that is, is the way it's currently written, has someone in legal, is our attorney, looked it over and made sure that at some point in the future, we do not have a line of citizens here because somehow that idiotic council back in 2016 let one slide? Are all the bases covered? As a client, not an attorney, I get asked that, so.
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney. Kind of hard question to answer. One of the reasons why we are having this presentation on first reading is to make sure that the public and council understands this before it goes to second reading. We have hired special counsel for this specific project with prior expertise in mining. We also take comfort in the fact that Boulder County had issued the property owner a permit to conduct the mining and reclaim it. We do think that Boulder County has pretty strict standards for operation, mining operations within the county. And also, this sets up the structure for mining within sort of the infrastructure. The devil will be in the details of the mining plan and that still has to come back for review. So this just creates sort of the process by which mining can occur. The details by which any particular mining project will occur is still subject to future review should council pass this ordinance. And so we are reviewing the mining plan approved by Boulder County. It looks pretty good and we'll have further special counsel review as we implement the mining plan for this particular project.
The answer is yes. I got your back, Brian and council.
The answer is mostly yes, yes, at this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
We have been annexing a great deal of land all along the river. And I was reassured several times that there would be no mining on that land. And because of the public designation. And we changed it from agricultural to public, P designation. And now we are coming back and not making an exemption for one person to mine his land, but to change this designation for everything. That means that all of the property that we've recently annexed and designated as P would be subject to the possibility of mining. Just kind of astonished at that. Secondly, the, we changed the things that can be appealed now to planning and zoning. So it really isn't appealable. It is only appealable if an egregious error has been made by planning and zoning. That is the only thing that can now be appealed by the citizens. So it isn't, they can bring it back, but just as with the hospital, we can't overturn anything unless there was an egregious error caused by planning and zoning. So the citizens don't really have any kind of say in bringing it back unless, I mean, planning and zoning doesn't usually make big mistakes. The staff level approval here is what gave us the charter school and brew pub, brouhaha. And so I really think this is very problematic and I can't support it. I don't object to the other one, but this, the first one having to do with the mining, I can't support.
Councilmember Moore. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, Don, could you walk through the process for being able to mine on public lands again, please?
Councilmember Moore, mayor, members of council. So the best example, I'll do my best with, I like to use my hands or have something to point to and I don't really have a good map I can put up, so forgive me. If the city owns a parcel of ground that someone else owns the mineral rights on, then they would have the right to request to mine that property. And that first goes to how we purchase property that had already mining allowed or someone had purchased those rights to be able to mine those, okay? Now, a lot of that's more legal discussion and questions on how you split property rights from proper, from parcels. But if someone owns those, they, there are certain requirements in the state that they're allowed to go in and get those, okay? But what would happen is that they would come into the city and they would make application first through a pre-application meeting with us, with staff, where we would sit down and they would explain what they intend to do with their mining. And we would go through our typical process of having all the departments at that meeting that would be able to give feedback and be able to ask questions about what they're proposing. Through the process, then, they would have to turn in a limited use site plan. Part of the limited use site plan then would be the documents that they are going to also have to submit to the state for approval for their permitting. What we would be looking at is first is the mining plan, which I do have an example of, one. Everything's hidden now, I can't quite get there. So up on the screen right now, and this is part of the Irwin Thomas property. So what you're seeing up here is a map that was approved by Boulder County. And what they were showing is how they were going to go through and do pods of areas where they were going to excavate, pull out the gravel, and then move on to the next area. And then they would also have a reclamation plan, which is my next slide, that shows how they're going to backfill those areas and create ponds as they move through the mining process, okay? So that's what we would be looking for again on public land, which is, how are you going to mine it? What is going to happen with the mining? Are you just hauling the gravel off? Are you going to have a processing plant? We're actually going to get that information so that we can evaluate what the impacts would be. And then we would also ask for the reclamation plan that shows how they're going to put the property back after they're done with getting the gravel out, okay? So a limited use site plan doesn't necessarily have to have a neighborhood meeting, but again, staff could require that based on the location, the proximity to adjacent properties that could be impacted. I can't say 100% that we would or wouldn't, but I think it makes sense that we should surely think about requiring a neighborhood meeting for something like that to let people know what's going on. After the neighborhood meeting, the applicant would submit the plans to the city. We would review at staff level. We would look at it for compliance to make sure that we're mitigating the impacts and then making sure that the reclamation plan is one that's going to put the property back the way it's, it should be. And then what will happen is, again, is whether or not staff decides, and then ultimately be up to the planning director to make the decision whether or not she would want to approve that at a staff level or if she wanted to, she could push that up to the planning commission for a public hearing before the planning commission where they could make a decision. If planning commission has a hearing on it, then it's appealable. There are rules on what can and cannot be appealed and there are rules on what has to be evaluated on an appeal by the council. But those are, those are to basically make sure that our rules were followed and that there wasn't any kind of mistake made. So it is, it is limited, but it's also meant to make sure that it's being appealed for something that was in our code that wasn't followed or wasn't done, that was supposed to be done per the regulations. So that's how that would work.
All right, I guess the issue I'm really having with this is that 10 years from now, you know, people are going to forget about all this stuff and all of a sudden, there's going to be a gravel pit on a piece of public, on a piece of Longmont's property. How do we make sure that the citizens are involved in that process in the, in the future? I guess that's, that's mostly a comment, not necessarily a question. I just think it's something that is missing out of this ordinance. And I think that planning, there should be at least a public hearing on this saying, moving, moving it into planning and zoning is a further approval, would give that public hearing and let people have the opportunity to know about it and be able to comment on it. As far as the mineral rights, it's probably, it's, it's going to be, come down to that as far as if it's appealed. But at the same time, it's a matter of making sure the public has input into what's happening on Longmont's property. So that's, that would be an ask to put that into the ordinance is to have that go to planning and zoning.
So that would be a change then to make it a conditional use instead of limited?
Well, when this annexation was first brought to us, you know, it was kind of a win-win for the city because the city then had the advantage of, when we redeveloped the river corridor, we had control, you know, of city land. You know, I mean, so it's, there was some advantage for us to annex this land because we wanted to rebuild our river corridor. And then this whole problem about, well, there was a conflict between being able to mine and then we directed staff to bring back a solution. Said, go ahead and annex it and bring back a solution and that's what you guys are doing. So, you know, you guys are just doing what we ask you to do and you brought back a reasonable solution. Now, maybe there's some little tweaks like what Jeff just said that might make it a little bit better or neighborhood meetings. But I think the solution you brought back is, is a pretty good solution. So that, you know, we do get control of the river. That land would have been mined anyway through Boulder County, which has pretty good mining controls. I mean, that was the original intent. And a lot of good things happened. I mean, you look at Pelopons and all these other places have had mines. You've got these beautiful, you know, running tracks around them. You've got, you know, in the end, 15 years from now, people love the reclaimed mines. I mean, they're just great assets for city to have, so. You know, I, in principle, I agree with supporting this.
Councilmember Peck.
Do you have any idea the length of time we're talking about on the mining of this? Because if we are also looking at it as developing the St. Rain Corridor, do we really want to develop the corridor with gravel pit mining going on next to it? Is there any idea to know how long that mining would take place?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, a couple of things, and I might have Dale come down too here to give a little bit of information, but the mining itself, their interest is that we currently are finishing up approval for the property that is, we currently, to the north here, so again, just for people at home, north is to the right. Ken Pratt Boulevard, Highway 119 cuts through the middle where the arrow is right now. And then up to the top side, we have two developments that are going on. The first is the Village at Harvest Junction, which is a residential development for single-family homes that's getting ready. They're actually doing their pre-construction meeting and getting started. They're going to be building almost 300 homes next to the rec center, which will become adjacent to this property. So we're going to have future residents that are going to start moving in up there probably this time next year, okay? We have another, almost 300 units of multifamily apartments that are in our process and are about a month out from being able to start building the Martin Street Bridge over Left Hand Creek. And then they will start their apartments for, again, another almost 300 multifamily units that are in this portion right here. So the landowner is concerned that, from their standpoint, they don't want people complaining about their operation.
Exactly.
So they want to start. They've actually gone to the state now to pull, to get their final sign off so they can go on digging and moving that out. So their goal is that they want to start this spring into the summer so that they can start on that piece closest to where the development is going to start this year and start moving back from there and pulling the gravel out. The other thing that they're doing is, in the plan for Boulder County, they have a processing plant approved on our property right here. So they get to mine it and they get to crush it and they get to do everything they want on that property. Right now, they're proposing to us to not do any of that operation on our property and to haul it out to their processing plant in Weld County. So what they would be doing is they would be going in here and they will be digging it out, putting it into a dump truck, hauling it off to process it. One of the things that's been discussed that I'll let Dale kind of get into more of the detail on is that we are looking at with our project along the river of taking the things that we're digging out of the channel and using that to help them build their berms to do the screening that's required on the plan and also potentially give us a place to do some of our.
So in the, in the handoff, I think, I think there's, I think there's a couple of points that I want to, that we need to go back on. The first is today, if I can have the mouse, here's the mouse. Today, as you look at this map here, they have the ability to mine in these areas. They have that ability today. They have the ability to put the rock crusher in this area based on the mining plan that they've submitted to Boulder County today. And they have, and the timing piece on this comes into play in the sense that they, with those permits in hand, can work at their own schedule, essentially, in what they can do. Is that correct?
I can clarify.
They have time, they have a time limit, but it extends further out in time. But this would give us the ability to do is, as part of the overall agreement, give us the ability to accelerate that time so that we don't have conflicts.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'll try to clarify a few things as well. First of all, Councilmember Moore, you're bringing up a very good point with regards to what does the future look like. One thing I think for council to know is, one example of us doing this in the past is Sandstone Ranch. The city bought Sandstone Ranch, it was mined, all that area along the river was mined after we bought it. We actually used the proceeds from the mining to pay for Sandstone Ranch. It has since turned into the gem for the city. It is, it is one of the most treasured areas, and I think rightly so, because it did go through a reclamation, albeit now it's been flooded. But that's an example of where, you know, mining activity, if it is properly reclaimed, can actually become a, an awesome asset, just as Golden Ponds is and other areas along the river. With this particular project, the city manager is correct, they have approval to mine. Albeit now, the mining plan calls for that occur in the late 2020s, even into the early 2030s, which will result in mining occurring with literally hundreds of homes out there. which will result in mining occurring with literally hundreds of homes out there. What we're trying to achieve in a win-win situation is to, through annexation, allow that mining to get underway sooner. The owners have indicated an interest to do that. With regards to the crushing facility, we had also previously come to an agreement with them in our integrated reclamation plan that included Sandstone Ranch to not have the crusher facility there. So that's an agreement that's sort of already in place, but this would accelerate the mining to get it done sooner, so that reclamation and those kinds of activities can get going sooner. And the tie to the St. Vrain project is that we are going to be generating a large amount of excess material as we are excavating along the St. Vrain to create a larger channel. And to the extent we can find property owners nearby that are very close to the project so that we don't have, you know, 10- and 20-mile haul routes, which is what becomes incredibly expensive to haul material, to the extent we can find those property owners that are willing to work with us to provide places for that excess material to be deposited, I think it's in the interest to be able to try to do that. And so I think there are a number of aspects of this that, both long-term historic, you know, what we've done in the past, we do have to be diligent, though. We have to make sure, as the city attorney has mentioned, that when the mining plan comes forward, we have to make sure that it, that it fits what we want and what Longmont needs to have happen out there. We gain greater control of doing that if the property is part of the city, as opposed to in the county. And so those, those are just perspectives. And if you have questions, I'll try to answer them, otherwise I'll get away from the podium.
Councilmember Finney.
You do such a great job. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to agree with what you were saying. This actually, this plan that we have is a win-win for everyone, especially us. I can't believe that we wouldn't do it or that we wouldn't go forward with it. It would be silly. It reminds me of a, an acronym, the cave people, the citizens against virtually everything, you know? This is something that's good for us, and I think we should move forward with it.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I agree. I just want to make, the reason why I raised the, I just want to make sure that we're avoiding future problems. Right now, that land is being mined. It's in Boulder County, and us annexing it in doesn't change anything other than the fact that in the future, we can reclaim it and have another potential jewel of the city. So it's really not going to change anything other than the fact that it's going from outside the city to inside the city, and we get the opportunity to benefit sometime in the future. Or we do it not, and don't get the benefit at all, I guess. So I'm actually going to move passage of ordinance 2016-7, that's 07.
I'll second that. Councilmember Christensen.
Just to clarify, I am not objecting to this particular thing that we had discussed before that I actually think is a good project. What I'm objecting to is amending our land code, the entire land code, so that all, everything labeled public is subject to mining without any kind of review. Because this area actually has been traditionally mined all the way out, and it's, and this is a good project. But we are amending not just this, to give them a waiver and allow them to do this, we're amending our whole land code as far as my understanding of this amendment.
So let me ask Dale to come up and talk about this, because on the majority of the properties that would be designated public, we own the mining interest. It's on this, this piece that we don't own the mining interest.
Then why would we amend the entire land code? Land development code?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Christian, I can't answer that question, but I do, I did want the council to know that certainly on the majority of the properties that the city has acquired, we have acquired the mineral rights with that. And that would be a discussion and a decision of this council to decide whether or not, you know, gravel mining would ever occur on those properties. And so when it comes to city-owned properties, the Golden Farms, though, is an example of a property that we purchased with a pre-existing mining agreement on it.
And also, if council will remember, you also directed us, and Dale and his staff are working on the conservation easements that actually will then overlay on that issue on those public lands.
Right.
So that's, that's a different discussion in terms of that.
Well, yes, I'd like to, an update on that, too, but that's a different discussion.
Mayor, Mayor Coombs, real quick, so there, there's an alternative. The alternative that I see is that you could just do it for properties that are zoned PUDMU that you designate as being allowed to be mined and not put it on public ground. Then what we would do is, we would have the applicant show the city's property that they're including in the annexation, that we asked them to bring into this, into the city for us, as PUDMU. We can rezone it in the future to have it, to go back to a public zone, but we could include all of that within the PUD if you wanted to. That's another option. So if you're okay with it from a PUD standpoint, we would just ask the applicant to zone all that property that's in that annexation, then PUDMU, and wouldn't zone, and so our property would be zoned that, we would not zone it public. Then you would not necessarily have to allow it to be on public property anywhere else in the city, only on property that was designated PUDMU that the council approved and did it specifically for mining. That's an alternative that we could do.
Councilmember Moore. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, I do think that we do need to have an ordinance in place for, to manage our mining operations and our reclamation operations. I would still would like to offer a friendly amendment that we have this go to planning and zoning, so we have a public hearing on the reclamation plan as well as the mining plan, so that we have public input and public knowledge that this is going on.
Second.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So you're saying, what? I'm not being smart aleck. So, so the friendly amendment is to basically withdraw the motion and send it to P and Z?
No, to add this as a conditional use.
Add what you just said.
It's a conditional use.
A conditional use? I'll accept the amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Peck.
One comment. So on the zoning, which, that bothers me as well, that we would change the zoning for everything. But let me just see if I understand this. You are suggesting that we could have just this parcel that we want to annex zoned for mining and not change the zoning for all public lands in this ordinance? Is that what I'm understanding, or is that...
So Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, one alternative would be, if, if you do not want to allow any mining on publicly zoned property, not publicly owned, but zoned, you would not adopt the changes in Appendix A, okay? Which would make it a limited, but based on the amendment, would make it a conditional use, okay? And then what we would do to make sure that what's approved in Boulder County could happen on their property and ours, is we would ask them to amend the zoning for the entire annexation to be PUDMU, which then would allow the zoning, assuming that you approve this ordinance, to allow mining within the PUDMU zoning district.
And that would still be under the control of the city of Longmont?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I actually like that idea, rather than changing the code for all publicly zoned lands in Longmont. And the reason for that is going forward with different councils, I think they should be allowed to make the decisions at that point for any other land that's coming into, into the city for annexation. So I don't know how to do that.
So...
Is it a friendly amendment again to that?
But I, and I don't mean to interrupt, but before you act on that, if I may, I just want to make sure that we check the zoning map to make sure there aren't any parcels that are covered by that mining plan that are already in the city that are not, that are already zoned public, just to make sure that we don't have, create a problem.
Definitely, we don't want to have unintended consequences by...
I guess, I guess what I'd like is, I kind of like how the, I personally like how the motion is now, and then we can get, we can talk about it on second reading. I guess that's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Yes, this is just the first...
Yeah.
Can we change it before, have we changed it a second reading?
So there, there is one parcel that is zoned public currently that's in the city of Longmont. Oops, sorry. Sorry, I'm running out of space. You got to get me a bigger table. It is, there is a small portion right here next to 119 that is currently in the city, and I believe there's a house and a barn on that property when you come over the bridge. So that is in the city limits, and it is zoned P-public. So that, that would be one portion that is a problem. The other is that some of the river corridor that we own as the greenway, although I don't know that their plan goes into that property, is also zoned P-public. So...
Okay. We've got a motion, it's been seconded, it's been amended, let's vote.
Good boss. Sure, Dad.
Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent.
All right, yeah, you really should have got me out of here, but, all right. The next one that I wanted to talk about real quick is cluster lot subdivisions. In our, in our dealings with talking about reclamation and kind of how properties could develop, one of the things that we found out is that we currently have cluster lot regulations within our land development code. The goal, again, is to have a large piece of property that you're trying to protect it, but you still want to give the owner the ability to get the development units out of that property that they could have based on the zoning. But you want to protect a portion of it and not have them go in there and develop it. So you're trying to encourage them to kind of transfer the development from one area into another area so that they get what they want, which is the density, but we get the open space, so to speak, right? Area protected. So when we were looking at this, trying to apply it on some of the areas that were looked at in this annexation, what we found is that the only places it's currently allowed in Longmont are in the R1 zoning district and the R2 zoning district, which are our normal R1, single-family, probably the neighborhoods you all, almost all of you live in are R1 or something around that same density. R2 is typically for our duplexes, medium-density developments, townhomes. But it didn't allow it in our larger estate parcels or in our agricultural districts. So on a property that's zoned agriculture right now, if you have a piece that shows up on the comp plan as open space and you zoned it as agriculture, you would be able to come in and do a five-acre subdivision on that property and split it up into big five-acre chunks. And so each one of us could have a nice five-acre piece that we maintain really well because we know how to maintain five acres, and we don't end up with hardly any open space on that property. Under the cluster development, we could all get one-acre lots if we wanted, and we could preserve almost 70% of that property or more of it not being developed and being left for an agricultural use.
We all get an acre.
In my scenario, yes, you'd all get an acre. Now, I don't have that acre to give you, so don't ask me for it. But in my council con, I walked through three scenarios. One shows the 80-acre parcel, ag-zone, five-acre minimum lot size, what that would look like if they went down as small as a 3,000, which I don't think is realistic, the square feet lots. That's similar to Quail Ridge, if you've ever been in Quail Ridge subdivision. Or the half-acre lots, which are some of the parcels that would probably be more in line with some of the development out in Portico or down near the Somerset Meadows development off of Airport Road south of Clover Basin Drive. So a larger parcel. And still, by allowing those developments to go forward that kind, you're still getting upwards of 76% open space. So our suggestion is, one is to allow this kind of cluster development where we get one road goes in and you maybe have a cul-de-sac with homes around it, the rest of the land is preserved. We get a lot of area that's not developed, looks and acts as open space. Now it's owned by them, then that's fine, but they get their development for the property and probably reduce costs in developing the property because they're not building streets through a whole 80 acres, they're only building it to a portion of the property. So we see it as a win-win. So the first change is to add in the zoning districts of A, A for agriculture, E1 and E2, those are our state zoning districts. And then we did make a few other minor tweaks just to clean up some references to our landscape regulations that were updated that did not get reflected in this section of the land development code. And so that's, in a long discussion, what we're proposing.
Which sure sounds like a great idea to me. I mean, to cluster these towns around, it saves the developer money, it makes the neighborhood a little nicer, and gives us this whole open space area, so I don't see anything negative about it. Councilmember Bagley.
I think it's a great idea. Gets us, we don't have sprawl, we get to preserve some open space. Sounds like more than a win-win. So I'd actually move passage of ordinance 2016-08.
Councilmember Christensen.
I think that's a great idea. It's in talking about the kinds of, we want to encourage some innovation, and this gives the developers some flexibility, is what, what they want to build. I mean, they can change over time, maybe, you know, initially, they think they want a stretched-out little suburb, and then they decide, "Well, no, I could have some really high-density townhomes or smaller homes or whatever," but a lot of property, it just gives, it gives a more interesting possibility for the developer, more interesting possibility for neighborhoods, and just a lot more flexibility for development. Thanks.
Councilmember Peck.
I think it's a good idea as well, but I do have a question about the open space. Are we talking about open space or space that's open? For example, the open space that we, that we purchase and leave for wildlife, or is this space that the developer has that the HOA has to maintain?
So as it's currently written, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, is that there is a percentage that has to be open space that is maintained by the, an HOA.
Okay.
And the, but the remainder of the property could still be owned by the HOA but not developed as open space. It could still be farmed, it could still be left as a hayfield or a native area.
Whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that.
All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent. Why don't we take a ten-minute break? ten-minute break?
Planning and Development Services. So this evening, we are doing a continuation of looking at our transportation community investment fee and our public building investment fee. We had a study session a couple of weeks ago with our consultant, Carson Bice, who is here again this evening. What we'll be looking at this evening is actually the draft plan, which includes actual fee calculations and numbers for all of those fees and includes kind of an overview of how we looked at, say, the public building fee, took a look at a potential recreation fee, and we'll walk you through all of those components. Well, the objectives of this study really are to make sure first and foremost that as a city, we're in compliance with state statute when it comes to impact fees. And also to make sure that as we implement impact fees, we want to make sure that we're transparent with those fees and that when we go to explain them to folks at the front counter at the building department, we're really able to articulate what those fees are for and how they're being utilized. Again, impact fees are system-wide improvements, and we're looking at fees that correlate with growth's proportional share of capital projects. No O and M is included in that. We had several folks who have worked on this project from the city. This is not simply a Planning and Development Services review of these fees. Nick Wolfram, our Engineering Services Director is here this evening. Nick, Phil Greenwald, and Bob Ball were all instrumental in putting together the transportation fee. They'll be here to answer any questions you may have once Carson is completed with his presentation. Both Jim and Teresa have also participated from finance. I think Jim is stuck in an airplane situation, so Teresa is here to answer any questions from finance. And then David Starnes is also here this evening. David's been working with us as we look at how these fees would change as we look at infill and redevelopment projects. And if you have any legal questions, obviously Eugene has also been a participant in this project. And with that, I will turn it over to Carson to begin the presentation. If you'd like to stop at any point and answer questions during his presentation, that would be fine. If you prefer to wait to the end, that's good, too. And then we'll be ready. With that, I'll introduce Carson.
Thank you, Joni. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's good to be with you again tonight. Let me find the pointer. Here we go. So if you recall, I was here two weeks ago, and we had a work session. And I'll just sort of refresh our memories a little bit on the first couple of slides here. But to just remind you, impact fees are indeed a one-time payment for new growth to offset their growth-related capacity needs in terms of infrastructure. We have to separate the money. They cannot be deposited into the general fund. And then we have those three legal tenets that we talked about, where you need to show the need, meaning that growth is going to continue to occur. It's going to generate the need for growth-related facilities. You need to show benefit, and that has to do with, you know, looking at geographic service areas and the timing of spending the money. And then there's proportionality, which gets to why we have different fee categories for different land uses. If you recall, we also discussed the different methods available to calculate the fees. There's the plan-based, the cost recovery, and the incremental expansion. And if you remember our discussion, if you look to the past, that's the cost recovery, where we're seeking to recoup excess capacity in our infrastructure system. When we look to the present, that's more of a consumption-based or what we call incremental expansion, where we take a snapshot of our current levels of service and what it takes to replicate that into the future. And then we have a plan-based, which is usually based on an adopted master plan. And one of the things we're going to hear about tonight is, or one of the needs we have when assessing a plan-based fee methodology, is we need to have a funding component identified and a commitment to do that. And we'll talk about that as we go through the presentation here. Joni touched a little bit on this at her introduction. You know, impact fees are limited to growth-related capital. They're not eligible to be used for maintenance and repair of existing infrastructure. They cannot be used to subsidize operating costs. As I said earlier, you can use them to pay yourself back for excess capacity. And another important caveat is we have to base the impact fees on a strict level of service analysis. And so unless we have a funding plan in place to correct existing deficiencies, we cannot charge new growth for a level of service that we're not currently providing as a city. Impact fees in Colorado are governed by SB 15, which was adopted in 2001. You know, all of the impact fees that we're looking at this, as part of this study, were developed prior to the adoption of SB 15. So one of our objectives here is to come into compliance with that act. And as I mentioned in our last session, it's, you know, improvements or facilities defined in that act include those that are directly related to any service that a local government is authorized to provide. And another caveat is it has to have a useful life of five years or longer. Before we get into the fees, I'll touch again on the process we used. The first component is, you know, sort of painting that nexus or painting the picture or telling the story of growth in Longmont is part of the first phase, where we look at what's the existing development base, what that growth or the projected growth is over the next 10, 15, 20 years. We work with staff through a series of onsite interviews to determine levels of service and identify capital needs. We determine the appropriate indicators of demand. We evaluate the fees using different methodological alternatives. We prepare the report, calculate fees, and then meet with stakeholders and go through the adoption process. In terms of the City of Longmont impact fee study that Tishler Bice is conducting, there are three fees being evaluated. The first are transportation, and those two components are lane capacity and intersection improvements. There's public buildings, and what you'll see here is there's a question mark with Justice Center because we want, we're soliciting some input and guidance from you on that fee category. Your current public buildings fee is sort of a catch-all. It includes general government and fire, and we recommend discontinuing the fire impact fee. One of the things that's, we would recommend now that SB 15 is in effect here, is if we were going to continue with a fire impact fee, we would want that to be its own separate category and reserve public buildings to more general government-type functions, okay? And then we have recreation buildings, which include senior centers, pools, youth centers, and community centers. This graphic here, I hope it's not too hard to read. This shows the same three impact fee categories, but it shows you which methodologies that we've selected. And with recreational buildings, we're going with an incremental expansion approach. With public buildings and fire stations, excuse me, public buildings, the fire station component, we're not recommending a fee for, but we do want to solicit your input on the possibility of a Justice Center fee. And then transportation, we're doing a plan-based approach for those arterial roadways and intersections. Let's start with the recreation impact fee. And I hope this, again, isn't too hard to read. This is a graphic from the, from the report. But as you can see here at the top of this flow chart, we're recommending that the recreation impact fee be assessed only on residential development. 100% of the need for recreation space is assumed to be a result of the existing residential population. Those costs are allocated to persons per housing unit, and it's multiplied by the net capital cost per person, which is the incremental expansion component for existing recreation center square footage. This graphic here shows that existing level of service. You can see here, the asset base we use to derive the fee includes the existing recreation center, the St. Vrain Memorial Building, the senior center, the youth center, as well as the centennial pool. We also estimate a asset replacement value. Again, this is that incremental expansion approach, based on your current inventory and levels of service and what it takes to recreate that. And then we get what our cost per demand unit is, which is $450 per person. What we like to do when we do this consumption-based approach is turn that, those level of service standards into dollars and projects, if you will, okay? So what you see in this slide here is a projection of population from the impact fee report. So we're showing over the next 10 years, a projection of about 5,760 persons. And when you apply the level of service standard of 1.51 square feet per person, you generate the need for an additional 8,681 square feet, and that's an estimated cost of about $2.6 million, okay? We chose the incremental expansion methodology, even though there's been a feasibility study, as I understand it, done on a new recreation center, but there's no funding plan in place at this point in time. And so the way to think of this impact fee is it's sort of a placeholder, okay? And that feasibility study, as I understand it, would significantly elevate the level of service, which would require a general fund contribution. So what this fee is set up to do is to maintain that level of service you have today. And the way to think of the dollars shown in this slide here is it's essentially found money, okay? If growth is slower or faster, the money's either going to be, or the revenue generated is either going to be lower or higher. But you're only obligated to spend what you collect. You're not, you don't have a general fund obligation on top of that from which you need to worry about. And that's a key distinction. And so when we, using this incremental expansion approach, the proposed fee ranges by type of, or, excuse me, by size of housing unit. What we've done as part of this analysis is a, is a, an analysis of persons per household by size of unit by looking at the census data merged with assessment data. And so this helps with proportionality. It makes the smaller homes more affordable, and as the large, the houses grow in size, they have more persons, they have more vehicle trips, et cetera. And so a residential fee ranges from $554 for a unit that's 800 square feet or less, up to a high of 1,391 for a larger house of over 4,000 square feet. And you currently do not have a recreation center fee in place today, so all of this is a net new in terms of a fee increase on your existing fee burden within the city. Any questions before we move on to the Justice Center?
No.
Okay. We're sort of placing the same dilemma with, with the Justice Center, where there has been talk, and as I understand it, again, a feasibility study on a potential Justice Center building, but we haven't identified funding for that yet. So again, what we've done is this incremental expansion approach, which is a placeholder. As you can see from the flow chart here, a Justice Center fee, if pursued, would be assessed against both residential development and non-residential development. From a residential perspective, again, it'd be allocated to persons per unit. From a non-residential perspective, it'd be allocated to employment density, or the number of employees per thousand square feet for office, retail, and industrial uses. This table here shows the existing level of service. We have the Safety and Justice Center that exists today of 33,000 square feet. The estimated replacement cost is $163, so that gives us our total asset value of about $5.3 million. We then compare that to the existing development base to get our, our cost per demand units for residential and non-residential development. Again, we like to turn this into space and dollars. And so based on that existing level of service, over the next 10 years, you generate the need for about an additional 1,581 square feet of Justice Center space at a total cost of about $300,000. And so when you look at the total fee for, for a residential unit, the fee ranges from $54 to $137, depending on the size of the house. So one of the questions we have to ask ourselves is, from an administrative perspective, is a fee in that, that range worth pursuing, particularly, you know, if it's, if we're not generating the need to spend more than, you know, 300 and something thousand dollars? And then if we look on the non-residential fee schedule in terms of commercial, office, industrial, and institutional, those proposed fees range anywhere from $3 a square foot for industrial and institutional to $6 for commercial, and then nine, excuse me, excuse me, cents, six cents, three cents to six cents, and then nine cents for office and other services. So again, it's a very modest impact fee amount. Any questions on Justice Center before we move into transportation? Okay, well, transportation's a little bit more complex. Again, it's citywide fee. It's allocated to both residential and non-residential development, and we use vehicle trips, trip adjustment rates, and we turn that into what we call vehicle miles of travel, okay? So in order to, to develop the fee, we look at the existing levels of service, and the fee is limited to arterial roads. It does not include collectors. And you can see here, your current network is about 115 lane miles, and the average daily lane capacity is 8,000 vehicles a day. This is very hard to read, but the takeaway here, and I understand that this pointer does not work against a white background, but essentially what this is, this table's summarizing our, our vehicle trip rate assumptions and your current lane miles, which is shown down in blue at the very bottom of this graphic. And essentially what this is from is from an aggregate demand model that we've created for this impact fee study, where basically this aggregate demand model is being calibrated to your existing levels of service, okay? And the takeaway is, if you look at the, the box shaded in red here, if that, based on the current level of service on your network and the projected growth in residential and non-residential development, and their growth in trips and vehicle miles of travel, in order to maintain the current level of service on your arterial road network, you would need to construct 6.7 lane miles of additional roadway capacity, okay? So keep 6.7 in your, in your mind. What we've done is we've developed a transportation CIP with staff that has come up with a total of 5.7 lane miles. So we're about a mile short. So the good news is, we're not in a situation where we're trying to elevate the level of service. So we're basically maintaining the level of service, if you will. So this, this CIP has a total cost of $30 million with a city share of $21.6 million. Then there's further, a growth share based on an analysis prepared by city transportation staff, that some of these road improvements are correcting existing deficiencies and are accommodating traffic that is regional in nature, for which we cannot assess impact fees for. So our growth share of this total CIP is about $5.4 million of the $21.6 million city share. So that gets us to a cost per vehicle mile of travel of $101.79. So when we run that through the model, when we look at trip rates and trip adjustment factors and average trip lengths, et cetera, that gives us a fee for the residential development that ranges from $925 for the smaller units, the 800 square feet or less, up to a high of $2,000 for your larger units, which cap out at 4,000, or 4,000 square feet or more. These are substantial increases, about usually 100% over your current fee, but then keep in mind, your current fee hasn't been calculated in well over 15 years. From a non-residential fee schedule, the fees range from a low of 35 cents per thousand square feet for industrial to a high of $2.57 for, for retail and commercial, which are the highest trip generators. And that represents an increase for the retail category, but the office, industrial, and institutional uses all are decreasing under this proposed.
Councilmember Finley, do you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick. Why, why doesn't, why don't the numbers go incrementally, incrementally higher? Why do they seem to bounce?
What do you mean?
Meaning 800 or less, 801 to 1,600, 1,600 to 2,400, 2,400 to 3, 3,200. You look at the increase over there, I'm just wondering why it's increasing disproportionately? I guess I, does that mean that the current fees are disproportionate to one another?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're just, the change.
Right. You've only got two fees now. You've got a single-family and a multifamily fee. And what we've done is, you know, one of the things that's changed over time is a movement toward progressive impact fee schedules. And in their most rudimentary development, the progression is only on single-family because a lot of time, you can't get the data on the multifamily units. We were able to get the data for multifamily units here. And so rather than have a single-family versus multifamily fee, it just varies by size of house. It doesn't matter whether it's single-family or multifamily, although we realize that most of your multifamily units are probably going to fall in the, you know, the 800 or less, or 800 to 1,600 range.
So my, I guess my next question is, in your professional opinion, I don't know how long you've, how long have you been hanging around the city?
This city?
Yeah.
Oh, how long have I been doing this?
The city.
The city, we've been working about a year and a half on this.
Okay. So are you familiar at all with the affordable housing conversations going on?
Yes.
To, I mean, developers need to pay their way for new residential. Got it. My question is, what impact will this have, if any, on new high-density residential buildings? Will that, will that, because we need more.
Right.
And I know we, we're putting in a lot, but will this put a break on that?
In my professional opinion, it will not. I mean, I think one of the reasons you're asking that is because the fee is going up.
Yeah.
And part of the reason the fee is going up is because it's been so long since it's been updated. And, and I'm not sure if you guys have been pegging it to the, to inflation on a year-to-year basis. But, so there's two things at play. One is the fee's going up. But the whole reason for the progressive impact fee structure is to incentivize affordable housing, to incentivize, you know, equity in the housing market. And one of the concepts that we have with the transportation fee in the redevelopment area is, we're calling it a trip, you know, basically a trip exchange district, where because of the fact that it's higher density, it has alternative modes of transportation, has connectivity, it qualifies for lower trip generation rates. And you could even take that, that concept and do it citywide if you wanted to, not only in a redevelopment area, but you could set up, you know, if there are nodes or areas of the city where you want mixed-use development to occur or higher density to occur, to occur, you could set up criteria that if you meet this, then there's this incentive, okay?
And I guess, and I guess Nick, is Nick our guru on staff that works with you?
Uh, Nick?
One of them, yes.
Nick's like, whatever, you know, it's almost 10, whatever. My question is, do you agree with, with his answer? Meaning what I had asked was, will this freeze or put a break on multifamily, high-density residential units?
Nick Wolfram, Director of Engineering Services? Excuse me. As, as far as that area goes, that's a little bit out of my, my range, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there. I think, I agree with the terminology that we're using here to try and proportionately do that. And the difference is that we're breaking this down finer than we have in the past. So I think it becomes a fairer fee.
I don't know isn't always good. That's the best I don't know answer I've ever heard, and it's always a good one.
And on the affordable piece, you still have the ability to waive those fees for the affordable product.
Right. And in fact, that's, that's a unique aspect of the Colorado Act, if you remember, we talked about two weeks ago, is your act actually goes, actually explicitly says you can just waive it. Some acts say you can waive it, but then have to make yourself whole.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, so did I answer the question?
Wonderful.
Okay. And so then we have a summary.
Councilmember Finley?
Sorry to interrupt you again. I, all through the, the study that I read, the logic is there, and I get it, and it's, it will actually be much fairer than it is now in some cases. The question that you raised on fees to encourage more affordable housing, I think that's something, a separate discussion we need to have. We need to look at all the fees that would affect that, not just these fees, but all the fees, what it, what it costs to build, and which ones should someone want to build an affordable development? Would we be willing to waive? And I think that's a discussion for another time, but we need to have it.
Okay.
And the final slide here, it's a summary of these three, these three proposed impact fees. Now, of course, you do have other impact fees that, that were not calculated as, or recalculated as part of this study. So I'm assuming that the, the next time that we're together, we'll have a slide that shows the total fee burden with all of your fees combined, but this is specific for, for the three that we looked at. So if we look at the residential uses, you know, the, the smaller-size homes, the total fee burden with these three fees as proposed would be $1,533, up to a high of $3,528 for the larger units. And then the fee per square foot of floor area would be $2.63 for commercial, $1.20 for office, 38 cents for industrial, and then $1.05 for, for institutional uses. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I don't see any more questions, but I think we should direct staff with, proceed with an ordinance to change the public building investment fee and transportation community investment fee and implement, and implement these recommendations. I think we're on the right track, and I think we should move ahead. Councilmember Moore?
Oh, this isn't necessarily a question for the consultant, but I must have been asleep tonight. We talked about public safety buildings. Can you, who's got that one? Justice Center.
So it's, go ahead, you go first, and then I'll jump in.
Let me see what's in the CIP. Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Moore. So currently, in the CIP, there is an unfunded project for an expansion of the Safety and Justice Center. So there's no funding for it, and it's really, when you look at, as Carson noted, you know, if you're going to put fire fees in one fee, they should be called fire. So Safety and Justice was really the only CIP project that was kind of left hanging out there. It's not funded, and so we left it in this category just simply to do the calculation. And I think it's a $2.4 million unfunded CIP.
So, so I think when you look at, there used to be, and, and we kind of went through it pretty quick, and so Carson, if you can help me with. There used to be a public building fee that we had, and I think that's probably how this conversation started out, because we started asking the question of, what's this for? You know, what can we use it on? And as we started doing the research, and we started going through all the parameters, there's a lot of things that were programmed to use it that couldn't legally use it, I guess is. And so then they had to start teasing out all of those issues, and that's part of the reason why there's a question there. Because when we look at the public safety project, it's in there as an unfunded project, but one of the questions is, will it be funded? When we look over a long term, because the 300,000 is only a component of, of the broader project. And when we look at the existing issues that we have, that we're all trying to wrap our hands around in terms of existing facilities, the O and M expenses, those types of things, that all comes into that calculation. And so that's a big reason why that question mark was there. In terms of the fire piece, when they talked to the fire department, what they realized is there's probably not going to be a need for adding additional fire stations. You may need to relocate fire stations, but not necessarily a need to add fire stations. And so relocation is not an allowable cost under this structure, and so that's why you saw them drop that completely out of the calculation.
Right. And if you look at this slide here, your fee is, your current public buildings fee is shown in the yellow. So multifamily units today are paying $1,056, and a single-family unit's paying $1,121. But the problem we have, as Mr. Dominguez mentioned, is going forward, because that, that fee was dedicated to fire, we don't really have anything to spend that on. And so we looked at, well, what are other options? And so, you know, I, I mentioned the plan-based approach with, and if you did decide to go forward with the Justice Center, or even though it's an unfunded project, if we, as a group, said we're going to commit to do this Justice Center, we could calculate a higher impact fee. But the downside is, or the risk associated with that, is we now have a general fund commitment, okay? Because we're doing a plan-based approach. And a lot of our clients got into trouble after the recession, where you were very aggressive prior to the recession with big plans, and then growth doesn't occur. Well, you still got that contract with the development community to build those facilities, and because the impact fee revenue wasn't what you forecasted, the general fund is now on the hook. And so we want to guard against those types of situations.
And Carson, are time limits correct on spending the dollars? Time limits?
You know, it has to be a reasonable period of time to spend the money. You know, it, I don't believe that, you know, there's so many impact fee acts that I have to remember. I don't think Colorado specifically has a timeframe. It's generally accepted, you know, the courts have ruled, and it's usually within a 10-year period. Arizona allows 15 years for utilities, 10 years on general fund. Some, some states are even stricter and just allow six years. The idea is, we just don't collect money and then sit on it for 20 years. We have to, we have to show that we're making progress.
So what's concerning me here is that we're looking at 10 years out, and we're only raising $300,000. Is it, how is that really having an impact when we have, we probably have the need today, but we're not even talking about even raising a fifth of it until 10 years out? So what's the point? I just, I don't get it.
Do you want to explain? Yeah, I mean, I, I, we, we just calculated this for illustration. I, I certainly see your point of view. You know, you see when a fee generates a low amount of money, you know, sometimes it's just not worth the administrative headache, particularly if there's going to be one funding source, usually some sort of bond issue, that's going to sort of save the day for you, if you will. And if that occurs, then you could investigate the feasibility of doing an impact fee to help repay part of that debt. But then again, you have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. So essentially, we did this for illustration, and this is really a call for you guys to see if you think it's worthwhile.
Yeah, so, you know, you mentioned a bond. Even if we had a bond, you have to have a revenue source, so. source, so.
Yeah. Exactly. And free debt capacity.
So again, I don't know if you answered your question, but when you said, we're not getting more, it's just the way we have to apply the process to it, based on the overall cost and what's related to growth, that's saying, that's what we could get out of it.
Do you need a motion or a nod?
Just a general direction?
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Christensen?
I wanted to thank you. I think this is a very good explanation of kind of a complicated subject. And, and it's always good to reexamine, as we're doing here, something we've been doing for a while, and reexamine and fine-tune it so that it's up to date. I also wanted to point out to Councilwoman Finley, if you look on page 271, it allowed, we are allowed to, according to state law, a local government may waive an impact fee or other similar development charge on the development of lower moderate-income housing or affordable-employing housing as defined by the local government. So that's already, you know, it's, already gives us the ability to waive this and incentivize affordable housing. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, if I may ask a question back. So I, I think that someone was talking to me, so I didn't quite hear your direction of looking to revise the ordinances. We want to make sure that you note that, so we do not currently have an ordinance for a recreation fee, so that would be a specific direction around that. If council chooses to continue with a public building fee or not, that would be good, based on the conversation you just had about the Justice Center. Transportation, we've got that one covered. And then also the other direction that I think would be helpful, would be making sure that council would appreciate us going back to the Transportation Advisory Board, the Development Developer Group, as well as if you're looking to do the rec fee, we would suggest going to the, to Prab. So we could just make sure we kind of cover all those bases, so we know what you'd like us to do. That would be appreciated.
Well, I guess I kind of agree with what Jeff was saying, that, you know, the public building, only collecting $300,000 over 10 years, maybe that's not worth the administrative cost, but I do agree with planning for the recreation and addressing that, and moving that to the Recreation Board. And then also the transportation, running that through the Transportation Advisory Board. Yeah. Councilmember Christensen?
Shouldn't we also run it past the Justice Center folks and see if they still want to expand, and that?
They've had conversations with, with the Justice Center staff, and if council wants to allow staff to look at that a little bit more to see if it's truly a viable option, we can do that.
Okay.
It's 300,000.
Also, you know, 300,000 over 10 years is not going to stay 300,000, because it's earning a little bit of interest all the time, and so, or it's invested, so it'll be a little more. You know, every bit of money helps.
Anybody else have any direction? All right, so do you have everything you need from us? All right, thank you. I appreciate the presentation. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I got to eat at Jersey Subs this last week, so I'll make that my business of the week. It was really quite tasty down there at Village at the Peaks. They're opening lots of new restaurants. You should go try them out. They're quite tasty.
Okay, well, this Saturday, I think it's Brian Bagley and I have coffee with council at the Senior Center, 9 o'clock.
Fun times.
Yeah, fun times. Also, tomorrow is a meeting at the museum from 4:00 to 5:30 that is related to Building Better Cities, and Kimberly McGee suggested that it'd be a great presentation, and it should be very interesting for council people to show up there and listen to it. Also, I kind of missed, I should have had a radon testing proclamation this month, because January's radon testing, and somehow I dropped the ball on it. But anyway, it's real important for people to have radon tests, particularly in Longmont. I had my house tested, yeah, it had radon. We had to do radon. Basically, 50% of the houses that get tested have a radon problem, so it's, it's something that, and the, the library actually has these units you can check out, that you can, you know, plug in and, and let them sit there for either a 48-hour test or a longer test, and it's free. And it'll tell you if you've got a radon problem, and not, it's not super accurate, but it'll tell you that, Jason, you really need to go get the real test kit, you know? So, yeah, I think that that's important for people to do. Also, just the public that was maybe watching on TV tonight, you know, the thing about the airport lease is, Mile High does have a lease that's a legitimate, valid lease. It's a very poorly-written lease from the city's point of view, because they don't have to pay anything until they pull a grading permit. So if we don't do something, maybe not this lease, but if we don't do a renewed lease, then they do have an existing lease that is legally binding for 20 years. I think they still have, I don't know, 12 years left on it. And they, with that lease, they don't have to pay anything until they pull a grading permit. So, you know, basically, that's not a good option for the city either, so just want people to understand that. All right, anybody else want to have any comments? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, excuse me. Yeah.
You said the words. You said the words, Mayor.
I got ahead of myself. City manager already commented.
So you may be happy with one of these. So one of the things that we were targeting for next week's agenda that was really going to take the bulk of that, to take that agenda, was the composting discussion. We just weren't able to finish and get all the numbers together for that meeting, and so because it is a study session, we can cancel that one.
Okay.
I also wanted to let council know, but you still have a meeting next week.
Cancel on next Tuesday?
We can cancel next Tuesday, because we weren't, we just didn't get, we couldn't finish, but that is going to be brought back on February 16th.
Okay.
So that's going to, we just needed to finish that work on that. You still have a meeting next week, and the meeting is Thursday night on the legislative dinner that we have.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll still meet as a body next week.
And will that be at the museum, or where are we?
No, that's actually, I think, going to be at the Dickens.
Oh, okay.
At the Dickens. And so, so we have, we have that coming up.
Awesome.
There was, there was a question, we were talking about the other item, I think it was Councilmember Christensen and Councilmember Peck that asked about the conservation easements. Dale's going to be sending an email to council, giving an update on that.
Okay.
They are moving forward. The third thing that I wanted to talk to council about, as you all know, we recently found out who was selected for the National Disaster Resiliency Competition.
Right.
Unfortunately, we were not included in that, so I want, I want Dale to talk a little bit about that during this part of the presentation.
It's okay, Dale.
Very quickly, Mayor and members of council, Dale Radamaker. Two things. As Harold mentioned, state of Colorado, Boulder County, and Longmont were not successful in getting the NDRC grant. I have to hope and presume that the, the other 12 or 13 recipients that did get it are more deserving, and, and frankly, I hope that the dollars are well-spent. I think we made a great case on behalf of the state, and I think we're going to learn more from HUD on, on what about this application was not the strongest or, or the most compelling. I think for Colorado, this was sort of our first rodeo to go into this HUD competition. I think some of the states that, that did get awarded, this isn't their first rodeo. And so sometimes you don't get it first time out of the chute. I don't know if we're eligible to apply again in, in future years, because these were for disasters that occurred over a three-year time period, and we were at the end of the time period. So it was 11, 12, and 13, so I don't know if it just rolls a year and keeps going, but, you know, we're going to keep looking at that. The thing I do want to say, though, is that just because we didn't get this grant doesn't mean we don't have a huge amount of work ahead of us. We do have upwards of $75 million of funding coming into this project. And the, and the good thing, and I think we told the council when we started this, it is our work to get as many federal dollars into this project as we can. And so as of today, we're sitting close to 40 million, out of that 70-some million coming from feds, with about 35, 36 million coming locally. That's not too bad of a ratio. So we're going to keep working on all the different federal options that we can. There are still a few out there that, that we think we can be very competitive on, and we are underway with the project. That's the other key thing, I think, for folks to know. Just because, again, that we didn't get the NDRC grant doesn't mean we don't have a huge project to get underway with. Unfortunately, we do have a funding gap. So it's about 50, 55 million, depending how the bids come in. Lot of money. It's, it's a big chunk of money. And I think we're going to have to really stay focused, keep pushing every, every dollar that we can, certainly use our dollars wisely that we do have, and keep in contact with the public. I think we're going to give you more information at your retreat on the particular projects, so I won't bore you with that tonight, but I did want to assure council that although we're disappointed that we didn't get the grant, that work is still very valuable work. It showed that we have a benefit-cost ratio that's positive, that's good, and, and, and that is applicable to future grant applications. And so it's not one time and you never use it again, so. Anyhow, wish we had better news, but sometimes you, sometimes you hit the ball and sometimes you don't.
I think when you look at, and I wanted to add a couple of things, when you look at the positive aspects of this, the one thing that I can say, you know, some folks go, well, can you use the information on other opportunities? Yes, we can. But what really came out of that was the working relationship that we developed with our counterparts in Boulder County, the working relationship we developed with the governor's office for flood recovery, specifically Molly Urbina and Ian Hyde. And I think those are, you know, the, improving and, and developing those relationships leads to other opportunities. We may just not know what they are today. And, and I can say that in, in conversations that I've had with that office, they've indicated that they continue to want to talk to us and see if they can be of assistance in helping us bridging those gaps. So I think those, you know, you didn't get it, you know, we're disappointed, we're committed to continue moving forward, but there was some, there were some positive aspects that really came out of this process.
And council, one other bit of good news is myself and several staff members went to the Boulder County Commissioner hearing this morning on the NRCS money on emergency watershed protection projects. And that's all another pot of federal dollars. The good news there is that the county is going to step up as the local sponsor on projects, and it includes the breach repairs west of the city, which we had put in our NDRC grant application. And so that's an example of, well, we didn't get it this time, but, but, but we, we are going to move ahead. And so Boulder County Commissioners approved all the staff recommendations this morning to move forward. It's, it's about a $2.3 million local match from the county. I, I did, at the podium, express our thanks for our partnership with the county and their focus west of us on the river. That resiliency means more than just one line of defense. Even though we had the Heron Lake Channel built, we still need to stay focused on all those other repair places. And so the good news is the county's going to go forward. I, I did say Longmont has always stood ready to work with you on protecting not only our city, but, but areas to the west, and, and that, that we would hope that would continue. So I forgot to mention that earlier, but that was actually some good news today.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So one of the things that I have some concern about is that we're not really, I don't see that we're really engaged with the community on our, on our progress. Maybe it's time to come back and, and maybe raise, raise the awareness on that in the public view.
Councilmember Moore, I think you're right. We can't do that often enough, or in as many ways as we can, and so I would absolutely be ready to do that and keep that discussion going. We have to keep people engaged in what we're doing.
Do we have a public meeting when?
We have a, we're calling it our Big Projects Open House, and I think that's coming up on March 1st. And we will, one of the showcase projects is going to be the, the Resiliency ring, but, you know, your, your viewing audience at this meeting is, is really a good opportunity for us to always not only update council, but the public as well.
Thank you, Dale. So city attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mark.
Okay, this meeting is now adjourned.